Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Tuesday, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, meeting of the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Oxford. Time being seven P. M. I call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda, uh, sorry, first item on the agenda. In accordance with Master General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, I'm advising all those in attendance this evening that this meeting is being recorded by the Town of Oxford. In addition to the Town of Oxford, Mr. Robert King of fifty-nine Quobah Gav is recording the meeting this evening as well. Uh, next is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for a special permit for animals for Teresa Sullivan Gig- uh, Gignillion, sorry, of Twenty-three Winning Road. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter three, Section three point eight of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Oxford, Teresa R. Sullivan of Twenty-three Winning Road, Oxford, Mass., zero-one-five-four-zero, has applied to the Board of Selectmen for a new special permit for animals to keep up to a maximum of twenty chickens and one rooster at Twenty-three Winning Road, Oxford, Mass., zero-one-five-four-zero. The property is currently owned by Terry Sullivan and Timothy Gignillion and identified on Oxford Assessors Map forty-eight, Parcel A eleven, and at the Registry of Deeds in Book two-eight-one-nine-zero, Page nineteen. A public hearing will be held before the Oxford Board of Selectmen regarding this matter on Tuesday, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, at seven oh five P. M. at Oxford Town Hall, three-twenty-five Main Street, Oxford, Mass., second-floor conf- co- conference room. Um, this legal notice may also be viewed at, uh, masspublicnotices.org. At this time, I move to open the public hearing. Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Public hearing is open. Um, at this time, I am in receipt of a, uh, signed letter by the applicant who agrees to continue the public hearing with the Town of Oxford Board of Selectmen um, until April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven-thirty P. M. If there's anybody in the audience from the public that came to speak on behalf of this permit, I apologize. Um, we were receipt, um, in receipt from one of our board members that they were unable to attend this meeting, um, around twelve-thirty today. Uh, she's out of town in Vegas, hopefully having a good time. Um, so that is being moved to the later date. Next item on the agenda is rededication of the Town Hall Civil War Plaques. Uh, it's gonna be presented by Terry Cummings. Mr. Cummings, please come forward. You can, you can have a seat right there. Oh, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
That piece of paper you're looking at is a copy. Uh, the original is in the library, hopefully still in decent shape. I've on, notice the date on that, May fourteenth, eighteen sixty-one. Eighty-six people from the Town of Oxford signed up to join Company Yi of the Fifteenth Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry. It's May fourteenth. This year, May fourteenth, it falls on a Saturday. And what I'm here to do is request that we can have the use of Jocelyn Park on May fourteenth. What we plan to do for that day is, uh, the Fifteenth Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry reenactors will come to, uh, Oxford, set up a campsite on Jocelyn Park. They will be there most of the day. I'm not sure just what time they would start arriving. Uh, some of them come from Springfield and Chicopee, so it might take a little while to get here. But what we would like to do is, uh, and, and, and to take care of two birds with one stone. At eleven-thirty in the morning, we would like to dedicate the new flagpole at the schoolhouse. I say new, it's been there for almost a year now, but, uh,
COVID.
Unable to get that dedicated and everything, uh, we'll have it eleven-thirty. It would, uh, the Oxford Memorial Honor Guard and the Historical Commission would, uh, be at, uh, at the schoolhouse to, uh, there'll be a couple of speeches made at, uh, concerning the flagpole and that. And then the flagpole will be raised. It'll be raised at the tune of, uh, Call to Colors, played by the Honor Guard. One thing I would do for, between twelve-thirty and one-thirty, I, uh, I can offer tours of South Cemetery. There, there are a number of, uh, grave sites in there from, uh, members of, that were on the Fifteenth Massachusetts. One forty-five, uh, P. M., uh, the Honor Guard and the Fifteenth Mass will form at the Van Stand, parade down to the Town Hall. At that point, uh, we would like, uh, invite the, uh, members of the Board of Selectmen that would like to talk about this, about the Town Hall and the plaques or whatever. Hopefully, somebody will. Uh, at, uh, I will invite, uh, the two representatives for the town. At the closing of the ceremony, I will read the names of all the members, uh, from all the people from Oxford that, that died during the war and where they died. There's eighty-sixty-two of them. All their names are on the plaque. And then, uh, there'll be a twenty-one gun salute from the Fifteenth Mass and from the Honor Guard, playing a taps. And that would conclude that ceremony. Uh, also, on that same day, for people that would be interested, starting at three o'clock, the American Legion is having a steak dinner. It's fifteen dollars apiece and, uh, to, uh, reserve a place for that, uh, dinner would, uh, it needs to be, uh, reservations need to be placed by May eleventh. Uh, that would take care of, uh, what we're looking at doing on, uh, May fourteenth. Also, for information purposes, uh, on April third, which is a Sunday, at two o'clock in the afternoon, a Makaya Samborn of Troop One-Sixty-three, Boy Scouts of America, for Eagle Scout Project has built a monument in front of the American Legion for Desert Storm, Iraq, and Afghanistan. That monument would be dedicated at two o'clock that afternoon. Hopefully, uh, somebody from the town would, uh, would, uh, come and, and talk. Representative McKenna will be there and he would, uh, give a speech. And I understand he has a, uh, citation from the State House to present. After that ceremony, the members of the, uh, American Legion Riders are putting on a spaghetti dinner free for all veterans. Others are welcome to join. There would be a donation for that, but, uh, all, free for all veterans. Those are the two ceremonies that, uh, we have lined up. And while we're on the subject, two thousand twenty-two is the fiftieth year that the Honor Guard has been available. We are available for any veteran, the Town of Oxford, a member of the American Legion Post in Oxford or the VFW Post in Oxford, and ensure that they have a proper military burial. I see in the paper all the time that I see veterans being buried and I see no military funerals. And that's a shame. People that, uh, volunteered their lives to protect us. At least they, uh, we are available to make sure that a, uh, military funeral is, is ready for them. That's the reason why we exist. These are the things I, I'd like to talk about tonight and, uh, select to, like that stuff out. And I say, I would like to have permission to, uh, to use, uh, Jocelyn Park on May fourteenth.
Um, just a few questions. One, are you planning any events for your fiftieth anniversary of having the Honor Guard here in Oxford? Is any events?
For the Memorial Honor Guard?
Yeah.
No.
No, not yet.
Not at this point.
Okay. Um, with Jocelyn Park, um, either Dee or the Assistant Town Manager, have we deconflicted Jocelyn Park for that time period? And we're good for that time period? Okay. I already put this in my calendar. It sounds like it's gonna be quite the amazing event. I didn't realize you were gonna have the, um, Fifteenth Mass Volunteer Infantry, um, are they reenactors or?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, I'm excited to see that now, um, that, that portion. I didn't realize what a large event this was gonna be for the day. So, um, s- looks like it's gonna be starting probably around eleven or so with the dedication at eleven-thirty. Uh, twelve-thirty to one thirty tours around the cemetery, South Cemetery. Um, one forty-five, you're requesting a parade up Main Street from Jocelyn Park to the Town Hall. Um, have you contacted the police department or fire department in regards to the parade?
I'm waiting to get permission to.
Permission from us, okay. Board members, do you have any questions?
Just have a statement. I, I know the Honor Guard is very dear and true to, uh, Terry's heart and, uh, thank you very much for all the work, all the many years you've, you've put into that organization. Thank you for the work you do, you know? Um, it sounds like you got a busy year. That's gonna be a tough day of a lot of things for you to do. Um, as just a town resident, I thank you very much and I commend you for the work that the Honor Guard does. They do a great job. Uh, I've seen them in action at these ceremonies and they're, they're a very good group and it's all because of their leader they have right now. So, I just wanted to say thank you and I'm all in favor of anything they wanna do, so, my opinion.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the use of Jocelyn Park and the front of the Town Hall for the rededication ceremony of the Town Hall Civil War Plaques, contingent upon approval from the police and fire chiefs.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you are approved for the use of Jocelyn Park and the event that's planned for that day. Dennis, do we as a board typically present citations for Eagle Scouts and their projects?
We have in the past, yes.
Have in the past?
Yes. We usually have men have a ceremony, uh, presented, uh, at one of our meetings.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve a citation for the Eagle Scout for the memorial project at the American Legion.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
I will vote yes. We will get a citation together for that Eagle Scout. If for whatever reason, one of us are not able to be present to present it at that memorial, uh, I, I know personally, I'm, I'm working a twenty-four that day, unfortunately, so I'm not gonna be able to make it. Um, but if we can't get it to the Eagle Scout that day, we will invite them in to present them here. The last thing I'd like to talk about, um, I don't know if it's ever been done before, but just something that popped into my mind in regards to the fifty years of the Honor Guard. Would the board members be interested? And would the Honor Guard be available to present the colors at our upcoming town meeting? In honor of your fiftieth anniversary?
I will check and see.
Okay. Um, why don't we?
I hate to take that away from the ROTC, but they, they do a terrific job in that, but, uh, I will see if I can get a, a crew together.
I know our last town meeting, we unfortunately did not have the ROTC present, but maybe we can work together with the ROTC, uh, JROTC along with the Honor Guard and see if we can't do something together to present the colors, uh, 'cause I'd really like to honor, um, the Honor Guard for fifty years. What, what you do, um, it's tough, uh, with the number of vets that we lose, so, um, I'd definitely like to try and, um, show appreciation for that, so. Why don't we take a vote on it? You go back and talk to the Honor Guard. If you can't do it, you can't do it. Um, okay, I'm, I'm being told that we need to hold off, um, on the vote, so why don't you go back and talk to the Honor Guard and we will?
I will.
And I'm assuming it's because it's not an item that was on the agenda, so in all fairness, i- it should be something that comes back to the board. So, I would ask you to go back to the Honor Guard and ask them and then, um, just let me know and we'll present it to the board again. I would really like to do that for you guys.
One thing I'd like to point out, why the Honor Guard is so important? When you present a flag to the next of kin, the last words are, "In a grateful nation." When I was discharged in nineteen sixty-seven, the nation wasn't all that grateful. And so I wanna make sure that the people at, uh, in my position and such know that things have changed and that the nation is truly grateful for their service.
About time. Thank you.
Do you want this?
Thank you.
Yes.
That's my coffee.
Okay, um, jumping back to the public hearing, I discussed continuing it to April twelfth, but we did not take a vote on it. So, I will make a motion that we continue the public hearing to April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven-thirty P. M.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. That public hearing is continued. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, um, a presentation by Eastland Partners. Uh, they're gonna be giving us a project update this evening. Um, we are, we have Chad Boardman and Clay Williams. Is that correct?
This is Chad.
Okay. Uh, from Eastland Partners will be presenting to the board and the community.
Hi, for the record, my name's Chad Boardman, represent Eastland Partners. We're a developer here in town and we own the, a large parcel, um, uh, near Cumberland Farms and, uh, down off of Route twenty and Fifty-sixth Corridor in North Therapond. And, uh, we haven't been here in a while and, uh, we actually, actually a few of the members here on the board came together uh, in, uh, probably three or four weeks ago for the, uh, awardance of the Mass Works Grant uh, for the whole Route twenty corridor section, uh, for the new highway project. And, uh, it said I'd come in and kinda give an update of where we were and kinda, once again, congratulate everybody's hard work in the town, uh, specifically, you know, Jen's work, Jared's work and Tony's work and of course, other boards and towns' work to, uh, get this grant. And, uh, we're, we're welcome to be a part of it. Uh, our portion is a, 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 a portion of work for sewer extension, uh, running along our, our project as shown on the screen here. It's kinda in that area where the commercial complex is, where you see the stop sign, uh, the lighted signal in the orange, uh, buildings. We've, we're gonna do in the sewer extension that runs along, goes down Route twenty and goes into the woods, into the Town of Auburn, and upgrade a pump station, uh, over there. So, in the last few years, we've actually commissioned a, a full-blown sewer study of the existing pump station, uh, uh, that's located in, uh, over the border in our friends in Auburn, uh, to see how it can handle additional sewage flows uh, in the Oxford corridor where the highway is being, uh, redesigned uh, for new sewer infrastructure. Um, so of course, you know, Jared and everybody's been really busy with the Mass DOT as well as ourselves as well. Um, when we originally came in here for the earth removal and the padding plan project, what, what initially happened, um, kind, we kinda disappeared for a while because the, uh, project fell into the guidelines of, uh, MEPA. And MEPA is a state environmental agency who, uh, you have to, uh, promote several substantial studies involved with traffic engineering, wastewater studies, uh, environmental studies, uh, gas, uh, studies, uh, you name it. Uh, it's on their checklist. Uh, so after we learned that, we've got kinda the kibosh to actually do anything on our property because these, they say you have to actually show what you're gonna think you're gonna do on your property. Um, so luckily, we were already in front of, of course, you guys before on the planning board, of course, of course, to, uh, start with the, uh, you know, bringing down the highway and actually trying to plan with the Mass DOT for, uh, the future. So, Mass DOT was originally gonna kinda fly by this corridor with a new highway system. Uh, at the same time, we own, own several hundred acres in this vicinity. So, over the course of really the last two years, quite honestly, uh, we've been going back and forth with the Mass DOT into making provisions and, uh, design, uh, requirements to, uh, design for the future where we're donating land that could be used for acceleration and deceleration lanes, uh, in front of this highway. Of course, with this new highway, uh, those provisions aren't gonna be built, per se, when that highway there is, but there's design plans that accommodate for underground structure to set it up where the future would be easy for a light to happen at this current intersection. So, that was everybody's, uh, uh, million-dollar question all these years. Uh, the planning board, the selectmen, of course, here, uh, was for public safety. Um, the light will come on when actually it demands a, uh, traffic, traffic warrant. And that's usually based on how many cars are actually online at that point. So, of course, we're showing about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of mixed business use, use, uh, I mean, use, uh, in that, kinda the orange building sector. And then, as you can see, northerly, uh, Oxford has a, an R four zone, which is a multifamily zone. And a number of, years ago, we came here and we're continuing to move forward. Actually, even some recent discussions with Tony at the town, uh, planning level, uh, to, uh, come forward pretty soon with, uh, the three hundred and twenty residential units. And realistically, again, seems like a lot, but this whole project is between ten and probably twelve years of, uh, completion. Um, so it's, it is a giant, uh, monster. Uh, on the board, of course, you might see some, really some on the green side. That's actually in the Town of Auburn, uh, but the whole MEPA was kinda wrapped up as this whole parcel. So, again, all the projects are all co-mingled, uh, waters reviewed, uh, intermunicipal agreements, where the sewer is going, where's the water going? Uh, what happens, uh, what kinda heating systems I'm using with all the buildings and whatnots all gets vetted out, uh, right now. So, that's kinda where we've been. And, uh, I did wanna come back here because, uh, you know, uh, over the years, what, what's happening out there is the, the highway itself was moving eighty feet onto our property with an elevation change of six feet difference. And then all of a sudden, it's moved back to where it was. And then it was moved a little forward to us and the elevation came down. So, it was a lot of value engineering. We're kinda trying to adhere to some of the rules of MEPA, but the scope of where the highway was, where is it really gonna go? What was the kinda issue? But I can luckily say that they are moving to the next day. Again, the Mass Works was grant, uh, was released. We actually, uh, did a lot of work to actually get a Fave Wa- uh, Phase One waiver request, uh, which we did receive through MEPA, which is very hard to get, to continue with the, uh, uh, earth removal. So, that's why we're out there actually now. Uh, you might've seen some signs of some drills. Uh, there's some signs of, uh, actually high power lines going into the project and that's actually temporary means to run some of the large rock crushers by electric means. As again, that was kind of a, kind of a MEPA issue. They like to see it, the move towards electric rather than diesel. So, uh, that's kinda, kinda where we are again, uh, uh, right now. Uh, we're continuing working on some of the residential. Um, I'm working with Jared. We're actually flagging some wets down in the vicinity where we're gonna be doing some of the sewer work to try to get that through the, uh, Oxford Conservation Commission and the Auburn Conservation as well. Uh, so that's being flagged and, uh, we're gonna be, uh, removing more earth out there. So, we're really, uh, happy and, and welcome that we're coming to town. And again, thanks, uh, you know, Jen, of course, here, uh, for all of our work and Jared and Tony's work and everybody else's work. And, uh, that's kinda where we are right now. If there's any questions, I tend to ramble on, but I'm happy to answer any.
Uh, one, thank you for coming out and giving us in the town an update on the project. Um, like you said, ten, ten-to-twelve-year project here, so, slow-going, but it, it is going. And I know there was, there was a lot of concern about granting the permit and then the not, and the work not being done. So, um, you've, you know, you're continuing to work there. Um, you've proven a great partnership with the town by helping us with the Mass, Mass Works Grant that we received. So, um, I think that's very reassuring for, um, some of the community members to, to see that partnership with the town.
Absolutely.
I will pass it on to the board members.
One thing you haven't mentioned, my, you've put up, you guys already put about five hundred thousand dollars into this project, right?
All, all of that, yeah.
To benefit the town.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And you have made a nickel out of it, so that shows.
Not yet, yeah. We're, we're, yeah, the, the whole project, I, I, I tend to say, it seems like an astronomical number, but it's actually a real number. It's, it's a quarter of a billion dollars here when it's all said and done with the apartments, the three hundred and twenty residential and all the commercial complex down there, aggregate sales and what, whatnot. There's, there, it's a major, major project. And it's been a lengthy process. It, it just doesn't go the next day. Multiple different pieces and parts are moving and Aquarian Waters recently come back into the game and, uh, which is great 'cause I know what they are looking for, water tank, storage. And there's, there's a lot of studies upon studies. And again, the MEPA is kinda also hanging there, but at least we have a, a smoother, clear direction on how everything works together, how, you know, Oxford works with Auburn and how everything's all interconnected. So, we're, we're really, it, it's looking a lot better now, that, uh, it's be- becoming more clear than, uh.
Chad, do you know when they're gonna start to work on Route twenty?
They said in the fall. Uh, but again, you know, a couple of years ago, I was in front of all the boards, like, "Oh, my God, they're starting to start next year," so. But they have, uh, of, uh, you, you guys might be aware, they have notified all their butters along the thing for the taking. So, I did a, a taking, uh, meeting myself, you know, several months ago. So, that is a, is a good sign that it takes the, you know, the taking of the land. that is a, is a good sign that it takes the, you know, the taking of the land to actually get started as well. So that's an encouraging movement there. But they did say towards the fall. And then which end of the project, I think it's up to the design build engineer, but I'm not positive. It's sometimes when they award it to the next level, they say it might be a reason why they start on a certain area first.
My question to you also is the, when you get the pad ready site, are you gonna start developing the commercial right away?
We would, yeah, 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 we would.
You're gonna wait all the rest, you're gonna start?
No, no, no. Concurrently all at the same time. A lot of blasting for, that's why we phased it out accordingly, kind of that first approach. That's where it kind of, when I was originally in here in front of all the boards and the planning board, where that confusion of that stoplight kind of came into play.
Absolutely, yeah.
It was obviously, that's the first mode to get into the property would be that vicinity. So we would blow the ledge up, which we're doing right now. But we're kind of working towards the back and kind of working a little bit towards the front. But we are taking care of that area first. And again, you know, proof is in the pudding. Like I always said during a lot of the other meetings, is, you know, you don't know, you don't know us from anything. So until I get in there and prove ourselves with the blasting that's already been occurred, and then, you know, even work with Jared with all the inspections and things been going great. It's just, you know, as long as one hand knows what everybody else is doing, it tends to work out great that way.
Well, it's good that we're not gonna wait 12 years to the commercial.
No, 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 not at all.
That's a good thing.
No, no, we're actively looking at, you never know who comes around the corner. So we had another large parcel in Auburn, which, which a semi-local company did want to come in fast and needed something. So that's, doesn't outrule this, this particular parcel. Yeah, there's a lot of ledge there. It can be done, but.
Well, good. Thank you.
Sure, yeah, no, no problems. And if there's anything else, you know, I can come back in another couple of months as well. I said that to the planning board as well. I think I'm coming back in May. I can do a brief synopsis where we are actually in May as well.
Okay.
But I want to thank everybody as well.
Yeah.
Back with a permit for a new business.
Exactly. All right, thank you.
I was just late to the table.
Sure.
I do want to say that since we've been able to get the $2.8 million Mass Works grant, it has made your project and a lot of other businesses in the area, I think, energized. You already were making the plans, and it's important for us to keep that momentum going. But I do think it's very helpful. This is not a small project. It involves a lot of moving parts, as you had said. And to come back and speak with this board and to keep the town apprised, I think is very helpful.
Absolutely, yeah, willing to do so.
A lot of energy. I know our DPW director and engineer in the previous one, and also all of the different boards that weigh into this, you know. It's helpful to us to keep, you know, information flowing.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And everybody's been fantastic so far, too. So it's been great.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Jeff.
Have a good night.
The next item on the agenda is going to be removal of the, removal of shade tree under Mass General Law Chapter 87, the Huguenot Oak Corner of Huguenot Road and Russell Lane. Presentation by Jared Duval and Wayne Burlock will, yeah, presentation by them, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I'm Jared Duval, Oxford's DPW Director. I'm joined by the Town's Tree Warden, Wayne Burlock. So we're here tonight to discuss the storied Huguenot Oak. I wish it was under better circumstances. As you can see right off the bat here, I've brought some pictures that were taken within the past week of the Huguenot Oak. I also see that Ms. O'Reilly, Jean O'Reilly's here as well, and I'm happy that she's here to maybe speak to the historical significance and really do it more justice than I can. But the tree is estimated to be at least 400 years old. And it's truly a remarkable landmark in the town of Oxford. It's certainly when I first came upon it, when I first started here, as you round the corner on Huguenot approaching Russell Lane, it's just a striking in its stature. And obviously, again, in sentimental and historical value, the first settlers in Oxford actually used this as essentially a 17th century GPS to find their way to the Huguenot settlement. So just remarkable. The fact that, and it's spoken to in some of the health assessments that have been done over the years, but the fact that it was used as a landmark that long ago really speaks to the age because it had to have been of a certain stature to be noticeable. So it was estimated at the time of the Huguenots settling that it was probably almost 100 years old at that time. You're talking in the late 1600s, 1680s. So truly remarkable. But the health of the tree unfortunately has been in decline for the past several decades, a couple decades at least. We've done a health assessment that was commissioned using a third-party certified arborist back in 2009. At that time, the tree was in, was in fairly good shape. It looked much different than this. And unfortunately, I didn't have pictures to share, just one grainy black and white, but the tree was in full bloom. You know, in its glory, it was a near 80-foot tree with a near eight-foot diameter at chest height. So it's truly massive, and you can't miss it. So after the gypsy moth sort of infestation that happened around 2016, 17 or so, there was another health assessment done by that same third-party arborist. And at that point, it wasn't looking so good. The health was sort of deteriorating rapidly. I think they speculated at the time, this particular arborist, that it may not fully bloom again. And I think since that time, Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that it has fully bloomed since that 2017 report. And since the gypsy moths had set in, there was some outreach done with the Historic Commission at that time. And I think from what I glean, I don't believe I was here, no, I was here at the time, actually, but not involved in, you know, particularly with the Huguenot Oak or this project. But I think it was decided at the time or agreed that it was becoming a hazard, a potential hazard to public, you know, people and property essentially. In 2017, one of the main leaders that's no longer in this picture had fallen on the adjacent private property. It had crushed a Little Tykes picnic table. The only remaining leader is that one you see off to the left, sort of spanning across Huguenot Road. So any passerby that goes underneath it is potentially at risk. The trees obviously exhibit significant rot. Let Wayne, he can speak to some of the particulars. But we're here tonight, basically there's three avenues that we can take to take this tree down. We can go the traditional route. This is under Chapter 87, Mass General Law, Chapter 87. Traditional route would be to hold a public shade tree hearing. What we had talked about in the past week, just seeing the rapid decline, is for the sake of taking care of this swiftly, we felt it best that we'd go the, another route while still allowing for public comment would be to come to the Board of Selectmen. A vote of the Board of Selectmen to authorize the removal would, you know, it would overrule the need for a public shade tree hearing. So that's our goal tonight, is to, you know, present the condition of the tree overall, solicit any feedback from the public, and then hopefully get your vote to, to move forward. And, you know, pains me to say it, but to take down the tree. And what we would aim to do is take out the leader there that extends over the road. And then about that height, we would cut the tree there and leave a better, you know, a portion of the trunk essentially as a memorial. Because at that point, the hazard would be mitigated or eliminated. So we could still leave it there as a memorial. And then question will be, and be happy to collaborate moving forward with Historic Commission, is, you know, what do we do to memorialize the tree beyond that? Do we put up some sort of sign or a plaque? There was talks about planting another white oak in its place. And what we would do during the removal, if authorized, is we would take stock of any good wood. We would store that somewhere in town, probably at the DPW, until a use for that wood can be identified. Because that's how the conversations had moved to was, let's keep some of the wood, maybe commission a craftsman to make walking sticks or gavels or cutting boards, whatever it may be, with the wood that's left over. So that's, unfortunately, as I said, I've got a couple of the pictures here, too, I'll show. Kind of cycle through here. And Wayne, these were taken, what, last week, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
You can see there's a large hollow cavity in the trunk. That's been like that actually for a number of years. You can't quite make it out, but there's actually, at some point, I believe back in the late 90s or so, maybe earlier, the trunk was actually filled with concrete to try to preserve the health of the tree. So it had been declining even back then. So you can see evidence of that there. This is a lot of the dead wood just from this past winter, basically. So that's what's fallen down in a short time. And another vantage point of the tree. So that's, that's all the details that I have, basically on the tree itself. I'd be happy with Wayne here. We can answer any questions the board may have, and be happy to answer any questions the public may have.
Is there any part of that tree that still blooms, that's still alive, potential to salvage and splice with another?
Not for the last two years, no.
Okay.
Nothing at all.
Okay. Board members have any questions or comments?
I'd like to hear from the Historical Commission before I comment.
Okay. The, the section of the meeting does allow for public comment. So if there's anybody from the public that would like to step forward, we have a mic over here that you can come up to and speak into.
If I may add, too, I didn't, I was getting to the sort of three avenues for the removal of it. The third avenue would be that the Tree Warden declares the tree a hazard. And then you could forego any sort of public hearing, but recognizing the historical significance of this. We wanted to have some opportunity for, for public comment. So that's why we're here tonight.
Okay.
Can I throw something out there? Maybe a stupid idea, but you talked about saving a good chunk of the tree. Would it be worth having the person that did that sculpture in front of a library to sculpture something out of it, related to the pilgrims or not?
O'Reilly speak to that. We talked about that this morning, actually. So I know she's got something she'd like to say.
I guess it's not, I guess it's not a good idea.
Okay. So we are in receipt of a letter written, I'll just read it. It's to the Board of Selectmen from the Oxford Historical Commission dated March 23, 2022. And it's regarding the Huguenot Oak Tree on Huguenot Road. The OHC, at its regularly scheduled meeting on March 22, 2022, made a motion and approved unanimously the following narrative. "This is the last remaining white oak tree traditionally documented that served as a means of guiding the Huguenot settlers beginning in 1686 back and forth to and from their settlement at the top of this west-facing hill. Members of the OHC were made aware by the town manager of this meeting tonight. Members of the OHC acknowledge that this historic tree that has been covered with the gypsy moths during the last couple of years may need to be removed in the interest of safety as determined by the proper authorities. Unfortunately, it was apparently determined that spraying to get rid of the recent gypsy moth infestation would not be worth the effort and the finances required to try to save it. Although we are saddened to have, to have to acknowledge this tree needs to be removed, we recognize that there may be a need for that to occur. We wish to express our appreciation to Eugene and Kristen McKay, who oversaw the care, care of the area under the tree daily for many years. In addition, we are aware of the care given to the tree through the years by other residents, by Oxford Tree Wardens, and more recently by Oxford DPW. We look forward to some of the wood from it being crafted into items which could bring in money to support a fund which could be used to replace the old trees removed within the boundaries of the Oxford Main Street Historic District. We recommend that a stump of proper height remain, if it is possible, with a commemorative plaque attached to identify its historical significance. We feel that this would be a dignified way to recognize its historical legacy. Hopefully, there's a white oak sapling nearby to replace So that is the position of the Oxford Historical Commission. Did you want to, did you have something to say?
We're not gonna put a sculpture out of it.
I.
I would go, I would go along with the Historical Commission recommendation.
I personally am a little wary of just leaving a stump there because the stump's gonna continue to rot. There's really no way to preserve it. And that's just gonna deteriorate and probably even more rapid with, with the weather that we've been having in this area. I recommended and talked with Jean O'Reilly this evening about potentially taking a cross-section out of that tree, the full width of the tree, and somehow preserving that cross-section. And then placing that in place of the tree with a plaque attached to that so that residents and travelers, visitors can still go and see the mammoth of a tree that stood there. And even educational purposes, they can count the lines within the tree, if it's standing up on its side, and read the plaque that's attached to it. I personally would rather see something like that be placed in that, that spot than a stump that we can't preserve that's gonna rot away eventually. So I think when I spoke with Jean this evening about that, she was, she was in agreeance that that was a good idea. That's my idea that I shared with her before the meeting. I don't know how the rest of the board feels or the DPW, or even the rest of the Historical Commission that's present, if that sounds more of a safer, doable deal.
We'll ultimately do, you know, whatever the board or Historic Commission decides. You know, we want to mitigate the risk, but we certainly want to pay homage to the Huguenot Oak. So the only thing we can't guarantee, obviously, is what's the wood gonna look like when we cut into it. So there's no guarantee there will be a full cross-section of that tree. It could be rotted in the center. So it doesn't mean that we still can't preserve, you know, a piece of that. But just, you know, as a heads up, basically, that it could be worse off than we know until we cut into it.
Well, that was a question I was going to ask is, and you really can't, you just answered it because you don't know what the inside looks like, how long that stump would last if you left the stump. I personally thought Jean had a great idea, or the Historical Commission had a great idea to leave a stump, a nice plaque. But if it comes to be that the inside is rotted or whatever, or it's, you know, kind of, it's something that it's gonna deteriorate so fast that it's not a great idea. But I like the plaque idea. I think if we could leave some of it there and put a plaque on it, you know, if the stump were in good condition, you know, my brain's sitting here and saying, why don't we put a little, little roof over the thing and make it like a little memorial situat, like a place where people could just go and it would protect the plaque and protect the main part of the tree from getting tremendous weather. But again, it's all got to do with what that stump looks like. So that would be my, my kind of thought process.
So with that being said, I would agree that, you know, there's that huge branch that's hanging out over Huguenot. So there is a safety issue. So why don't we consider taking a vote this evening to make the tree safe? Kind of go with the path that you recommended, take, take that branch off. We take it down to a safe height, and then we evaluate it from that point. Maybe you could present back to us or the Historical Commission on the condition of the tree at that point. And then we can, you know, brainstorm a little bit more as to the appropriate actions to take with the tree from that point. And I saw.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, through to the Historic Commission and the DPW Director, I grew up on a working farm, and we did a lot with tree maintenance. And one of the things that you can do to elongate even a cut tree's life, you can do sealant. Like even if you cut off the top, you can do a rubberized sealant on something like that. That depends on what is the shape of the, the actual trunk in the center, which might give you some more life to prevent water from getting right down in that. But at the end of the day, if the root system is already not being able to, to pull water up through the core of the actual bark, the bark will then start to fall off. And then from there, even if you've got it sealed. It takes time. I mean, you know, something like that would take a great deal of time for it, as you can see. So I think the best, of course, is to evaluate just really how, how, how the condition is. Save the wood that you can, that is healthy. We talked about that. Put that aside and then really evaluate. And then I think come back and say, okay, it's, it's worth being able to try X, Y, and Z with either a sealant and a plaque for the main tree. Or do the opposite, you know, that you had suggested. I think both are great ideas. Yep.
Ms. O'Reilly, did you have something you wanted to add? Ms. O'Reilly, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, in addition to what we wrote in that memo, I think the idea that you came up with tonight is new to us, and I think it would be in the interest of everybody if we had some time, not for removing the, the leader, that's not it, but just to make a determination at a future date, do we leave a piece of the trunk standing? Do we do, as you're talking about, how do we handle this, so that once something is done, we're not looking back saying, ooh, we should have done it this way? Because we've talked about this about two or three years ago, we met with the DPW, they came to one of our meetings, and I'm not sure if it was Wayne or Steve Esposito that discussed the possibility of taking the wood from the Huguenot tree and making different items. Now, this is one of the items that a friend of my husband's had made. It's not finished at all, but you can put various colors in, and the wood that he was using, he was given a piece of wood from the Huguenot oak, it was pretty rotted, but he was able to piece it together, and as I said, this is not finished. But the goal would be to finish this, make it look like it should, and then sell it and reimburse the craftsman who makes this a certain amount of money, and then sell it for a profit, and take that money, and then put it into a fund, as I was referring to in that memo, and purchase shade trees as needed to replace some of the old trees that have been removed. And we all thought that was a good idea, so that's what we'd like to see happen for the wood. But would like to reconvene that discussion and probably include the selectmen and anybody else to make a determination once a couple pieces have been removed from the tree. Okay?
Okay.
So we're in favor of that, and I saw a few heads nod yes.
Me too.
Thank you.
You sure they weren't nodding about my sculpture?
No.
They were going the other way.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain, or I'll make a motion that the board approve making the tree safe, trimming down that, that branch and bringing it to a reasonable height, preserving the wood until a determination can be made as to its uses, and then also coming back to, to the Historical Commission and us with the condition of the stump that remains.
Well, are you saying cut it all the way down to a stump now, or just cut the lead that's hanging over the road?
The, the lead, and then bring it down to a height that's safe, because I, I see where it splits, and I'm concerned-
Yeah, a lot of those.
-that any one of those splits could come off also, so I believe you had mentioned taking that lead off and bringing it down below that, that Y in the tree, correct?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Wayne, do you want to just chime in a little bit as to, yeah, the exact location? I'll let him-
Well, my concern is public safety. That's what I'm, I'm here for. We have concerns of saving the wood. If you looked at the leader to the right that is snapped off, that fell into the butter's yard, and it was during a lightning storm, heavy rain, wind, that was on 717. We called an operator, Sean was the DPW Director at the time, called an operator to evaluate the tree on 1017. He was concerned with the condition, he would not say whether to remove or leave the tree, he just gave us his evaluation of the tree, which wasn't doing well. During a heavy blizzard on March 18th, the crown, the sunupot, fell into the roadway during the blizzard. I believe the fire department came, cut it all up, cut out the road, opened the road. So it's been very concerning with this tree and the health and the safety. That main leader to the left over the roadway concerns me, if that falls or goes into the roadway. So I'm just here to make it safe, or plead to make it safe, how you want to do it. In the middle of the V on top, that is hollow, I don't think there's going to be a lot of good meat in the trunk. To the, I don't know if I can get up and look, but to the left where that leader goes over the roadway, you'll see a brown spot, that's been painted. That's, that's a lead that was cut before my time, painted, and that's hollow. If you go all the way back to the bottom girdle, it's cement, so I believe it's hollow. So I'm here to make it safe, looking at your recommendation. We're trying to salvage as much wood as possible, make cutting boards, make a bench, whatever we can do to salvage it. But once we do cut the leaders off, make it safe, what are we going to do with the wood? You know, where's it going to go, who's going to hold on to it? We salvaged some wood, we brought it up to, excuse me, was it Ray, Ray Rowe?
You can have that.
Okay. Ray Rowe took some wood and worked with it. But we do at the barn have palletized wood that we, we saved for cutting boards, repurposing, whatever we could save, we saved. His walking sticks, his, you name it, we saved what we could save. All right, now I'm here to make it safe.
Is there room at the DPW?
What was that, sir?
Is there room at the DPW for-
We're anticipating storing it, and we'll try to keep it covered. The, the wood, as best we can, we're pressed for space down there, as most people know, but we'll, we'll find a proper home for it in the meantime. And I think what Wayne, you know, when we had met on site within the past week or so, we're envisioning that that cut will be somewhere around that leader, that main leader. You know, judging by what Wayne had said, where we believe it's hollow, and again, it'll be, we'll know when we get out there, but when we're talking about a reasonable height, that's, that's what we're envisioning, just so you can kind of visualize what will remain. And if, you know, if we cut into it there and it's, it's still hollow, we'll, we'll have to take a little bit more off, but we'll preserve as much as we can, and I have no issue to come back, you know, the board and to the Store Commission and provide an assessment or evaluation once we've done the, the hazard mitigation, if you will.
Yeah, this is something we're not trying to do tomorrow, we're just going to ball rolling, so everyone's on the same page, you know?
You kind of show us on the thing where you're going to cut it, so the, so Historical Commission knows.
That's why we're here.
He wants you to go up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I don't know if they just think you're cutting that arm that's hanging over the road, and the rest of them-
Everyone has different ideas where they want to cut it, that's why we're here.
Roughly.
We're thinking right about at this main leader, somewhere in this, this general area. If we can, I mean, Wayne had spoken about this leader here, this is hollow, so we may not be able to salvage much beyond or much above that leader.
Okay.
But in that general area.
So my, the motion that I was putting out there was not seconded, so it's not on the, I would like to reword the motion. And it, it's going to give the DPW the flexibility for safety for the community. So my motion is going to be for the DPW to make the Huguenot oak safe, and preserve any wood that you take from that tree to the best of your ability.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's three in affirmative, one absent. Safe, and let's see what we can do with this piece of history.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. Thanks, Sharon.
The next item on the agenda is civil service vote to pass over police officer candidate and authorize chairman to sign the letter. At a previous meeting, we were, we had four candidates presented to us, and we passed over one of the candidates. We have to report that to civil service. So I make a motion that the board pass over Alexander Mateo Rondon for the position of police officer because of experience and qualifications, as noted by Chief Sad, and to authorize the chairman to sign a letter to Mr. Rondon.
I'll second that motion.
Motion, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, that's three in affirmative, one absent. The next item on the agenda is going to be Access Oxford dissolution status update. The board is in possession of meeting minutes dated November 9, 2021, where Selectwoman LeBlanc had asked the town manager for an update on Access Oxford. Just to quote part of the minutes, town manager stated the 2018 report of Access Oxford showed a beginning balance of $128,411.93, an ending balance of $160,050.95, with overall revenues of $172,000. She stated Access Oxford had substantial reserves that was based upon money received from Charter for the purpose of PEG funding, which was then provided to Access Oxford. She stated that if future services would not be rendered, then funds should be remitted back to the town as the purpose of providing PEG programming would cease. However, instead of seeking return of these funds, the town was asking Access Oxford to continue providing continued service by utilizing the reserves. Ms. Callahan stated the letter concluded that no equipment should be removed from the town property until the matter was resolved. There was email traffic back and forth with Access Oxford. The, the services that they were providing ceased shortly after that. They provided no more access to cable, and the equipment was, very little equipment was left here, and what was left here was, correct me if I'm wrong, disassembled and antiquated, so when it was tried to be pieced back together, it was not going to work for the town. After having this meeting that Selectwoman LeBlanc requested the update on, I later in that meeting, you know, addressed some concerns about the money that Oxford received from Charter that was given for PEG access for services that the town did not receive back. At the time, I was concerned about approximately $160,000 to $172,000 worth of services that Oxford should have received that we did not receive. After doing some research, I discovered the, the last annual report that Access Oxford submitted placed in 2019 before their dissolution, their net assets or fund balance at the year end was $187,928. They, they, that was the last report that was filed to the Attorney General's office, and just doing some research, just, you know, my concern after hearing this is that if Oxford was entitled to those funds for public access, or services were supposed to be rendered with those funds, and they were not, what happened to that? There are different routes that a nonprofit organization can take when dissolving, but ultimately, once they dissolve, they have to file a form, final form PC with the Attorney General. I called the Attorney General's office today to see about the money and equipment that Oxford, Access Oxford had, and how they dissolved of their assets. And I was advised by the lady that I spoke with, that the lady that handled this dissolution of Access Oxford no longer works for the Attorney General's office, and when asking specific questions about the final form PC, she didn't feel comfortable, the impression that I received was she did not feel comfortable answering any questions, and directed any further questions to go to the Assistant Attorney General. My town manager, I, I worked with your office a little bit on this, trying to prepare, is there anything that you wanted to add on this matter?
No, I, I think, I think you've captured it. I, I have been asked by the board to provide information at different times. Some information was readily available the last time I did the update in November, and, and some information was not. I think, you know, there are still lingering questions. It's certainly the town had a lot of questions, and also many residents that were upset when their TV screens went black, and that was very most unfortunate. I think we continue to try in good faith to bring resolution, but without having all that information, it, it was difficult, and you know that. So I think more information has come forward, I appreciate your sharing that, but once again, I don't think we have all the answers still. And, and I think for the, for the public and for the cable ratepayers, I think that we owe that kind of thoroughness, and where that all leads, I still don't have that answer, but I think the board is the one who, you know, sets the overall tenure terms with Charter, and, you know, we've set up the, the process now where we are offering those services in-house. It's taken us quite a long time to, to pull all that together, and I'd like to think that we're in a good place now, but also, as information has come forward, more information, it raises more questions than answers.
Yeah. So after Selectwoman LeBlanc requested this previous meeting, again, like I stated, I felt a little uneasy, like the town manager just said, you know, the, the residents of Oxford, they, that pay for cable, they pay into this PEG access with their bill, and they deserve a product that they were essentially left without with the dissolution of Access Oxford. The equipment being removed and the money that Charter had given to the town, that had given to Access Oxford, was not used. So with the information that, you know, I've managed to pull together, I, I think it's very important that the town man, or, sorry, not the town manager, the select board, with the assistance of the town manager's office, produce a letter to send to the Assistant Attorney General as recommended from the office, the Attorney General's office, from my phone call today, just to look into where this final PC, final form PC is, and just ensure, you know, if, if the residents are entitled to any of that money to come back or equipment to come back, that they're made aware of that. If, if there is no additional money or equipment that comes back to the town, then that's fine, we, we just owe it to the community that we close this out appropriately. So I would make a motion that the board draft a letter with the assistance of the town manager's office to file with the Attorney General's office.
So we're just asking the Attorney General to look into it, right? We're not accusing anybody of anything, we just want to confirm that if it's done, it's done. Have we contacted the individuals from Access Oxford that ran this to see any of their input, or?
So you would have to contact Access Oxford, which is an entity that no longer exists.
You couldn't contact the individuals that were involved?
I would also, like, you were not on the board at the time-
That's why I'm asking the questions, I don't-
Right, so there were attorneys that were involved on both sides, so the way that, you know, the- the direction that some of those discussions were going, I don't think it would be appropriate for the manager or individual board members at all to do that. I don't think you'd know what to be asking for anyway. I think there is an appropriate agency that looks at dissolution. Everything may be in keeping. We just, you know, I've had a couple board members ask that and I cannot, you know, provide that information because the final information hasn't been put forward. It's been a long time since the, you know, beginning of the dissolution notice to the town. So there should have been an adequate amount of time to be able to do that. And all that information might be in that report.
Okay. So we're not accusing anybody. We just want to get to the bottom of it and then move on.
Yes, absolutely.
So we can close this out and, okay.
Yes, like you said, there's no accusations here. It's just closure for the residents who went black on cable access for however length of time till we were able to get it up and running again.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's three in affirmative, one absent. We will follow up on that again. Next item on the agenda is the open meeting law complaints update. As we receive the open meeting law complaints, the board requested to receive updates as we receive them from the attorney and any results that may be found. This most recent update comes from Attorney Mark Rich from KP Law and it states, and this is sent to, just to make sure I have, the Assistant Attorney Generals for Division of Open Government. Dear Ms. Carnes Flynn, The Town of Oxford Board of Selectmen, the board is in receipt of a new open meeting law complaint submitted by Casey Fleming, the complainant, dated February 5th, 2022. The complainant, or the complaint, the complainant has submitted three formal complaints to the board containing the same allegations. This complaint being the third and containing no new information or allegations warranting further or separate review. The complainant's previous complaints were submitted to the board on October 21st, 2021 and January 3rd, 2022, and the board timely responded to each. The Attorney General's Office is currently reviewing the earlier complaints and as of the date of this correspondence, has not issued a decision with respect to those complaints. A copy of the complaint is attached here too as Exhibit 1. Notwithstanding the complaint being substantially the same as the October 21st, 2021 and January 3rd, 2022 complaints, the board included the complaint on its meeting notice for its February 16th, 2022 meeting, during which meeting the board reviewed and deliberated over the allegations contained in the complaint. Following its deliberation at the February 16th, 2022 meeting, the board voted to authorize Town Council to provide this response, which is based upon information provided by the town. The complaint pertains to the board's September 21st, 2021 meeting and again alleges board members violated the open meeting law by deliberating outside of an open meeting over a proposed citizen petition warrant article, deleting the recording of that meeting and refusing to put certain items on meeting agendas when requested. Exhibit 1, Attachment A. The board submits that there is no new evidence or evidence of any sort of the board's improper deliberation and again denies having engaged in any such deliberations. The board maintains that the remaining allegations do not constitute violations of the open meeting law. The current complaint contains no new or inculpatory evidence and therefore the Attorney General's Office should take no further action here. With this complaint, the complainant has provided certain emails from and amongst town officials that he alleges evidence is improper deliberations outside of a public meeting. The complainant alleged in his October 21st, 2021 complaint that the board deliberated over a citizen petition warrant article in advance of September 21st, 2021 meeting. And such deliberations led to, led the board not to include the warrant article on its September 21st, 2021 meeting agenda. The complainant now asserts an October 7th, 2021 email shows such deliberation occurred. In the email referred to, the board member LeBlanc wrote to board member LaMarche to request Town Council attend an upcoming meeting so the board of selectmen members can pose questions regarding the process of adding an item onto the warrant. And if he can provide commentary as to what was wrong with the items that were presented but were not on the warrant. Exhibit 1, Attachment E. The board submits this email reveals no more and no less its plain language conveys. The complainant appears to assume this email evidence past discussions amongst board members about the articles that were not on the warrant. The email itself does not violate the open meeting law as only two members of the five-member board were included on it. And the board member simply states that a determination was made in consultation with the Town Council that the citizen petition articles were ineligible for inclusion on the town meeting warrant. This is a routine process for the preparation of a town meeting warrant and does not necessarily and did not in fact involve deliberations amongst a quorum of the board concerning the subject warrant. The board again denies its members deliberated outside of an open meeting as alleged. The remaining two allegations do not constitute violations of open meeting law. The creation or dissolution of a video recording of an open meeting is not required under the open meeting law. See General Law Chapter 30A, Section 22A, Open Meeting Law 2018-89. The open meeting law does not govern a public body's obligation to respond to requests for recordings which fall under the Public Records Law. In any event, the town manager's response to the supervisor of the public records does not, as alleged in the complaint, admit that the Town of Oxford deleted the video file at issue. The town manager's letter clearly states that no recording was in fact captured as the operators were inexperienced with the equipment and failed to properly save the video image. See Exhibit 1, Attachment D, at 2. Dissatisfied with this response, the complainant continues to make baseless allegations against the board concerning the existence of the meeting recording. Separately, with respect to the chair's production of meeting notices, the chair of a public body does not need to include on a meeting agenda items he or she does not anticipate discussing at the open meeting, even if a member requests such item be placed on the agenda. See OML 2013-197, Chair Reasonably Did Not Anticipate Discussion of Topic He Declined to Put on an Agenda. OML 2011-13, same. Thus, where the board chair does not plan for or anticipate an item being discussed at a meeting for whatever reason, the chair need not include it in the meeting agenda. No provision of the open meeting law or the regulations promulgated thereunder require a public body chair to include every item requested on an agenda. Thus, these allegations do not constitute violation of an open meeting law. In sum, neither circumstantial nor direct evidence suggested the board deliberated outside of an open meeting and the board denies the allegations that it did so. The remaining allegations do not constitute violations of the open meeting law violation. Accordingly, the Town of Oxford Board of Selectmen respectfully requests the Attorney General take no further action with respect to the complaint, which represents a third effort by this complainant to raise issues that Town contends are not actionable. And then goes on to state, please contact him with any questions regarding this matter. The board is in receipt of the large packet of attachments and exhibits. Again, I thought it was important to read this into the record so that the community knows that even though we continue to receive these open meeting law complaints, especially on this same matter, that it has continued to be found not in violation of the open meeting law. This party continues to to bring this matter back to the Attorney General's Office, which is continuing to cost the town approximately $8,600 in legal services. We received the budget plan last meeting. That's why I thought it was important because the town manager had to raise legal services this year in the budget because we continue to have to use legal services. The next item on the agenda is an open meeting law complaint dated for December 14th, 2021. This is a reply to a letter that the board, I as the chair, had sent to Mr. Fleming in regards to meeting minutes. Mr. Fleming submitted an open meeting law complaint stating that we were not caught up on our meeting minutes. After we got caught up on our meeting minutes, I had stated, let's see. Let me just find my spot here. Okay. So the remedial action for this complaint was having reviewed and voted to approve meeting minutes from March 16th, 2021, April 6th, 2021, April 20th, 2021, May 5th, 2021, June 1st, 2021, and June 15th, 2021. Earlier in the meeting, the board decided that it made a significant impact in your request to approve the backlog of meeting minutes. The board also acknowledges the need to complete the remaining backlog of meeting minutes held on August 31st, 2021, September 7th, 2021, September 21st, 2021, and October 6th, 2021 promptly. The board had set a timeline for the January 11th, 2022 to approve the remaining minutes cited in the complaint. Moving forward, the board pledges to review and approve minutes in a more timely manner, stating within the next three public body meetings or within 30 days, whichever is later, unless the public body can show good cause for further delay, per 940 CMR 29.112. I know this open meeting law complaint impacted the Select Board's office. And the office is very busy with its licenses and preparing for the annual town report, typing these meeting minutes. These meeting minutes don't, it takes quite some time to produce minutes that are presented to us, the board. And there's only one person in that office. Sometimes the town manager's office is able to assist the assistant town manager and I believe at times the town manager is able to type meetings, meeting minutes. Mr. Fleming did not think that was an appropriate response and sent a request back to the Attorney General's Office. I request that the Division of Open Government review the attached open meeting law complaint filed with the Oxford Board of Selectmen on December 14th, 2021. I request review because while the board has pledged to do better in the future, the current board lacks credibility to make such a pledge. A determination from the Division is one of the three avenues for finding that future similar violations were intentional. 940 CMR 29.02, definition of intentional violations. I ask that the Division issue a determination for the benefit of that added enforceability. I am quite concerned with Mr. Fleming's course of action stating that the current board lacks credibility to make such a pledge. A pledge is just a statement that we are going to attempt to do better in the future. It's an understaffed office that is working long hours into the night on the weekends. There is an advertisement for an open position to provide assistance. I think the town manager has found an interim solution with the senior write-off, tax write-off program. But that's not, that's just a Band-Aid for right now. We need additional help in that office, which the town manager is well aware of. She's working as hard as she can to fill that position. I'm not quite sure why the board itself is being attacked as lacks credibility to make such a pledge. I would encourage Mr. Casey Fleming to reach out to me for further discussion on this matter, to see what I, as the chairman of the board and we as the Select Board can do to satisfy his complaint here. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to update the board on this matter.
Since we're discussing this, news on the agenda, it's amazing to me that we have an individual in this town that has pretty much a full-time job coming after the Town of Oxford with complaints. Must be nice to have that kind of time. And our government does not have that kind of time. We have a secretary that takes minutes and it isn't her full-time job the next day to get the minutes done. And she works very hard. She has other things to do. If we were to take the $8,600 wasted on law fees due to this complaint, we probably could get the minutes out a lot faster because we could have another person in that office. It's just, I think the people in Oxford should realize that in my opinion, this person has vendetta against this town and they won't be happy till they find something. So it's just awful that people have to be this way in this day and age. It's an awful thing. Thank you for allowing me to say that.
The next item on the agenda is acceptance of grant funds. Madam Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we've been very tenacious in pursuing all kinds of grants, whether they're from private foundations, state or federal agencies. One of the things that we have been asked to do, particularly with MassWorks Grants and some Community Compact Grants and some other agencies, is that typically they look to see if the town, once they make a proposal, that they're going to accept the funds. Some agencies have it, some agencies don't. I've done this with previous community and seen other communities do it. I thought we actually had done it when I first came with the first MassWorks grant, where we actually have the board take a vote to say they would accept any federal or state grant funds. Now with ARPA, that's a whole nother thing. So I would just encourage that if we have that on file with the Clerk's Office, we can give it to any federal or state agency that we receive funds from when they request that to show that, you know, the board is in, knew about the proposal and/or knew about the grant funding. So it's just a very, you know, sort of pro forma thing that we do, but we can have it on file and don't have to come back each successive time to do that. I keep the board very informed about every grant that we do apply for or get. Actually, tonight I'll be doing that again with a couple of items. So, but this is at least for the staff. It saves them time to come back and put it on the agenda. But again, I thought we had done it in 2018. We had some language, but not the broad language that allows us to do that. That's all.
Any discussion from the board on this matter?
Sounds good.
Okay. I make a motion that the board accept all future state or federal grant funds received by the town.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Then I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's three in affirmative, one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep the grants coming in. That helps.
Let's see, next- Let's see. Next item on the agenda is to, is a ratification vote for the renewal of intermunicipal agreement between the town of Oxford and the town of Auburn for the transportation of wastewater. The meeting minutes are in your packet for an emergency meeting that we held on March eleventh at four-ten PM, and I would make a motion that the board ratify the vote taken on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, where the board voted to approve the amendment to the intermunicipal agreement between the town of Oxford and the town of Auburn for the treatment of wastewater as written.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, and...
Can I vote on this? I wasn't there.
So, I was gonna pause real quick right there. You have the meeting minutes in front of you. The discussion was that there was...
You can probably shed better light on it.
Sure. This is just to extend for another year the already existing intermunicipal wastewater agreement we have with Auburn. Unfortunately, we did not get the document from the town of Auburn until literally that day, and it was going to expire on Sunday, which is why the board, very thankfully, came together, and we do appreciate that. I know the town of Auburn did too. This is not changing anything in the current intermunicipal agreement that has been in place for many, many years. We're gonna work through the course of the year. Our DPW director and the one in Auburn are gonna look at overall capacity and flows, and we thought we would have more of that done to this date, but there's all new staff in Auburn, and they've asked for the extension. So, there's nothing new in here, and it's just to keep it going. We don't want to have a partnership with the town of Auburn and not have it codified with an IMA.
And the purpose of this motion, the vote that we're taking this evening, during the emergency meeting, we voted to approve it. Because it was an emergency meeting, we had to bring it back to the board tonight to approve it in a public...
So, I can't participate?
Yes, you, long story short, yes. You may participate. Hearing no further discussion, I will entertain a vote, or I'll take, yeah.
I'll vote yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's three and affirmative, one absent.
Are we, are we, can I, through the chairman?
Sure.
The big project we're doing up on Ashwood, that we, we're working with Auburn to get more capacity?
One of our goals would be yes, to do that, but obviously...
But it has nothing to do with this?
No, not right now, don't. Maybe, maybe the next time, we may have some aspects to that to share.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes for December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Board is in receipt of these. I make a motion that the board approve the minutes dated for December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, as written.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Abstain.
I will vote yes. That is three and affirmative, one abstention, one absent. Those meeting minutes pass as written. The next date would be, I make a motion that the board approve the meeting minutes dated for January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, as written.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's three and affirmative, one absent. The next set of minutes, I make a motion that the board approve the minutes dated for February fourth, two thousand twenty-two, as written.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's three and affirmative, one absent. Next set is, I make a motion that the board approve the minutes dated for February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as written.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Three and affirmative, one absent. I would, I'll make a motion that the board approve the minutes dated for March eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, as written.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That is three and affirmative, one absent. The board was in receipt earlier this evening, or throughout the week, for executive session minutes. I would make a motion that the board approve the minutes for December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, as written.
I will second that motion.
I, motion's been made and seconded, and just want to reiterate, did I mention that they were executive session minutes? I did, okay, sorry. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's three and affirmative, one absent. Town Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sam, I don't know if you might be able to help me with my slides that correspond with the report, but I would greatly appreciate, or, or the assistant town manager can do that. Thank you so much. First up on the report is to make the board aware that once again, we are applying and have submitted to the Mass DOT for a municipal small bridge proposal and hopefully a successful grant awarded in the near future. Our grant proposal once again is for State Street Bridge, which is over Lowe's Pond, Lowe's Brook, excuse me. The bridge itself spans about eighteen feet. The concrete is, is quite deteriorated. The, the bridge and the corresponding road itself is heavily traveled by local residents and public safety personnel, and so this has been a continuous decline in this small bridge. There is this specific program, and because of that deterioration and severe traffic safety deficiencies, we are asking for our proposal for design phase of this hopeful construction project. It's in an estimation of about a hundred thousand for the proposal design, and then we think that the ultimate replacement cost will be about four hundred thousand. So, as you can see, I put up a few pictures to show, you know, through our DPW engineer and also our consultants, what kind of condition that bridge is in. The other item that has to do with a full-scale, you know, grant award that appears is fast approaching will be the complete rehabilitation of the Lowe's Pond Dam. I wanted to give a rehab project update. Since the last time I spoke with you, we've had the engineering firm AE Comm that's working closely as a partner with, between the town and the state. They've been actually trying to complete the necessary tasks to advance the project. They're in the finalizing phase for drawings for repair, as well as the proposed parking, walking paths, and the pedestrian bridge. As you remember, the early renderings were really fantastic for restoration, and since we're talking about the Huguenot Oak, which is just up the street, this whole corridor going into that neighborhood could be substantially improved, both with the history of, you know, Gabriel Vernon, and also the restoration of the dam. But I wanted you to know that the state, through AE Comm, has filed as part of MEPA protocol for environmental justice populations, what you see up there, two actual graphics in which they have to actually put out per this protocol for environmental justice populations, and once they advertise this, it looks like the MEPA filing will be done in May, and AE Comm was out last week, and they were doing upstream sediment sampling. So, they're, once again, working the project through, and hopefully in the not-so-distant future, we'll get an idea on approval process for the MEPA permitting process, and also maybe a construction timeline. The next item is something that I know I mentioned a long time ago to the former chairman, that when I first came here as town manager, the town had not become part of the National Class Action lawsuit, which was seeking settlement damages regarding the opioid epidemic. I had contacted our town council and asked if the town had actually joined that. They had not. He really wasn't aware that, and thought maybe the town of Oxford had, so I immediately, and it was a lot of work, Jennifer would tell you, the, the two of us had to drop everything to provide an incredible amount of data as part of this clash action lawsuit. We're one of a hundred and fifty towns in Massachusetts that put forward the best effort, which now is appearing to have been reaping some least major settlement indications. Our Massachusetts Attorney General just last week announced that municipalities across the state that had signed on to the settlement case would receive forty percent of the abatement funds to the state that is recovered, and that was up from the previous expectations of fifteen percent, which was a default allocation provided by the original settlements from the major opioid manufacturers. This is one area of settlement. There are also another area under Pharma, which is expected. But when we talk about settlements, this is a, you know, a billion, a multi-billion-dollar settlement, twenty-six billion, from two national settlements that are expected. Five hundred and twenty-six million will be coming to our state and any municipality that has joined. We've been kind of hearing about what this means. There are going to be, you know, a number of requirements once you receive the funds and how it can be spent. Obviously, it is intended to try to help those families and individuals who've been impacted by the addiction to opioid medicines, and I needed to actually file a number of documents recently, and which I did, including the state subdivision, to memorialize that we would accept the increased allocation. So, we anticipate that, and I'm speaking with the chief and, of the chief, from our public safety departments, that we haven't determined, once we get this money, we'll have a more, I think, in-depth conversation about what we could do with it, but our indications in order to comply probably will deal with improving outreach, education, treatment, and counseling options to local individuals and families impacted by, by an opioid problem. So, what this means is, we hadn't really had too much in terms of estimations, but over a sixteen-year period, because the settlement for this, just this one settlement may be occurring, it could be as much as four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars over sixteen years, and could be as much as, you know, an average of fifty-five thousand dollars per year. That is just an estimate, that is not exact, but this is one of the things that we're hearing, and, and if that's the case over a long period of time, we would hope that we could come up with a program between schools, public safety, and the like, that provides services we, we don't have right now. And, and I, and I know that in the future we'll have some kind of, I think, involvement where we can bring our public safety together and our educators and think of how we might be able to use these funds going forward. But it's, it's welcome news. It's unfortunate that it's taken this long to identify how addictive these medications are and, and some of the devious natures for over-prescribing that took place, that made people addictive, but, you know, hopefully we can, across the board, unite to, to put a dent in the overall addictive population in the epidemic. Number four on my manager's update is to inform the board that on March seventeenth, my office had received a resignation on the Conservation Commission from Mr. Edward Stucko, Stutsko, excuse me. He extended his resignation from the commission after serving for many years. The conservation agent and the commission are aware of the resignation, and obviously we all thank him for his service and wish him the very best in future endeavors, and I would be, hopefully in the future, being able to identify a member for the commission to replace him. Number five, North Fire Station roof project. So, I know I was one who drove by the fire station and noticed all of the materials up on it before they actually had started the project, and I wanted to provide the board with a little bit of indication of where that project is. You know, we have multi-millions of capital projects and planned items, and this is one of them. It's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar replacement of a roof. Once again, I want to thank Representative Joe McKenna for helping us defray some of that cost in the amount of a fifty thousand dollar legislative assistance appropriation from last year. But as you can see from these actual pictures, we had a lot of rotted deck that was discovered around the drains up on that roof. They not only replaced that, but they removed all of the leaking membrane, and it was really pretty significant that, the amount of damage that was there and that, how fast they did it. They did an incredible job and documented it all the way through. I asked our facilities director, could you get me a couple pictures so we could share them, and he says, I can do better than that. You know, the actual company that provides the actual membrane and everything has already done all these pictures, and so he provided a whole, and report, which you can see in your actual packets, but I just put a few of them up there to show what a brand-new roof looks like, and hopefully it will be very lasting into the future for our men and women at work at that station. The next item is Oxford Logistics Center Depot Road update. This is just, again, to let the board know that the company will be back before the planning board with a revised facility proposal. The applicant has met numerous times with the Conservation Commission, and as of last week, I had been informed that the Commission for Conservation had met on March sixteenth and had actually approved the order of conditions for the proposal. The proponents will be before the planning board on March twenty-eighth. That meeting's gonna be held at the Senior Center, and again, I want to say we've not received any information regarding imminent domain takings or an Amazon tenancy. I want to encourage the public once again that they can go on our website, under the planning board, and you can actually look at the materials. There's a lot of them. And additionally, the proposal at some point in March, I think March thirty-first, will be before the zoning board. I guess there are two variances that the company's seeking related to the roadway into the proposed complex. So, number of dates, I wanted to put them out there, and I'll keep the board updated anytime there's another project that's on its way, not project, hearing or meeting that's significant with regards to that project. And the last item is just to let the board know that as part of our capital plant fleet replacement, the Oxford Fire EMS department has received its rescue one truck. Isn't that quite nice-looking? It's now fully lettered and in service, and there's a new video that Kaylee Olson, our production media coordinator, put together to feature some of the lifesaving equipment. Is a longer video that's already on our YouTube and is playing on cable, and we also put a little one together, and I just want to, I'll, I'll thank everybody afterwards, but I think we'll try to put this just...
Today, we're proud to have Kaylee Olson of Oxford Cable Access here to go over and demonstrate with some members of the department, the new rescue pumper that we purchased recently after being approved in last year's town meeting. So, we are thankful to the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, our town manager, and the citizens of Oxford for putting your investment in us, and we appreciate all you do to support us and our important mission. Thank you.
So, again, we'd just like to thank the town manager, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and of course, the townspeople for your support. My name is Deputy Chief John Belanger. This is Deputy Chief Ken Sellers. And we'd also like to thank the Truck Committee, who has designed and overseen the build-out of all the compartments and the purchase of the tools. The committee was comprised of Chairman, firefighter Kevin Holstrom, was also comprised of Lieutenant Michael Hudon, firefighter Jeffrey Morris, firefighter Tyler Desatell, firefighter Sean O'Neil, and it was overseen by myself and Deputy Sellers. Again, thank you. We are always open. If anybody would like to come down and check out the truck and have a one-on-one tour, we'd be happy to provide that, and thank you again. Stay safe, and we'll see you soon.
So, that was a little snip, but the rest of it with the in-depth about how they use the equipment, what it means to the individual... the equipment, what it means to the individual firefighter, paramedic, is very important. I know nobody knows that better than you do, but I think, you know, we're entering into a new phase of trying to, you know, show and tell the story of what the townspeople are doing when they make an investment. It's not only life-saving to the people that they're going to answer a call to, but it's also important for those who are answering that call to have the best equipment that provides them their ability to stay safe in serving the actual emergency call. I don't know, Chief, if you had anything you wanted to say or not. You're all set. Okay. And I don't know if you do, you know, knowing your history, so...
I will during the community announcements.
Okay, go right. That concludes my report for this evening.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager.
I'm all set.
All set this evening?
I'm all set.
All set this evening? Okay. Well, then we'll get right into it. So I did have the opportunity to swing by the fire department yesterday while they were having in-service training on the new Squad One and the rescue tools, the E-Tools that they have on board. And I gotta tell you, I'm jealous of the E-Tools. You know, if, I gotta say to the community, take Deputy Chief Belanger up on his office, the doors are open. Go compare the difference between hydraulic tools and E-Tools. The new E-Tools that this town has purchased for the fire department are extremely impressive. They are lighter, they are stronger, they are the difference between life and death, literally, when your loved ones are trapped in a car. They allow the firefighters to move efficiently and quickly to extricate your loved ones, whatever means it may be. It may not just be a motor vehicle crash. There is a lot of rescue equipment. There's a lot of equipment across the board on that vehicle. I think it's outfitted very well, and I was super happy to see how excited the firefighters were last night, motivated and dedicated to, you know, be out there training. It was late, it was dark, but they were out there training on the equipment. It really, it means a lot to see that. And kind of curtailing on that a little bit, the roof repairs, excited for that to be done. I went over and got a tour recently from Deputy Chief Sellers, and it's quite impressive, the story behind the north station, how it was essentially a storage unit, basically, when it wasn't being used, and it was the firefighters that went over there, they cleaned it out, they updated it, they painted it, they made it their new home. For those that don't know, firefighters that are working 24 hours, that fire station is their second home, and you need to make it feel like home. You and the ladies and gentlemen that are gonna be doing the job next to you. So that, I just wanted to comment on that. The other thing, I had the opportunity this week to sit in on a roundtable discussion with Green Meadows from Southbridge, along with the botanist and Major Bloom and the Cannabis Commission Chairman, just for an update and some discussion in regards to the direction that cannabis is taken within the state. The commissioner had nothing but great things to state about host communities and the agreements that they're putting together. I know we have an upcoming warrant article for the town meeting to, that, well, the board voted to send it back to the zoning board.
Planning board.
Planning board, sorry. So I just, I want to emphasize the importance of what a business like that can provide to the community, especially since we're looking to expand the zone that already exists. Just, you know, it's 50 feet in one direction, as Director Sousa was explaining, and a couple hundred feet in another direction, just to allow for businesses that are looking at Oxford and want to be a part of Oxford. The amount of money that these companies bring into the town, their willingness to give back to the community. I know there was some concern at one point, I heard, like, you know, people don't want Oxford to be one big pothead establishment in town. That is not the case. You know, cannabis can be consumed via smoking it, it can be tinctures, lotions, gummies, edibles. And the, although there's not a lot of medical research behind its effects, the reports back from people who take it for medicinal purposes, you know, whether it's to treat anxiety or to treat pain, to help with sleeping, you know, I think it's a huge benefit to this town, not only financially, to be able to bring these businesses in, but it's also a benefit to its members of the town. I personally cannot use cannabis products, being in the military. It's still frowned upon federally, but I do support the use of it. And, you know, the different companies that were at this discussion encouraged, even if you don't want to purchase any right now, go in and talk to some of the professionals that they have in regards to...
I don't know.
Go in and talk to the professionals in regards to how it could benefit you. They have, you know, their main sales go to the 25 to 35-year-old category, but they're seeing a large uptick in 55 and older females who are going in there and say, hey, I want to sleep better, I want to relax some, I have laid-on-site anxiety. I guess they were telling one story of an older lady that was gonna be running the marathon, and she was interested in some cannabis before starting the run. So it's not just to get high and relax. It can be used for a wide variety, and I think this town, you know, has the potential for upcoming changes that could benefit the town greatly. So I just wanted to share that.
Great.
I'll stop ranting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Three affirmative, one absent, meaning adjourn.